I'm going to jump straight in and just give you a quick heads up on how we're going to structure the next hour and fifteen minutes. So I want to talk very briefly, not in any great detail, just a little bit about where, how we've come to this point today and how we got to the stage where we're here showing you this stakeholder map that we have in place, how we got there. So then I'm going to jump into showing you the, our, our map as it is today and how it is evolving. And our map, as has been explained, is really there to give us a visualization of the breadth and the depth of the network as it is today and give us some insights on where we can go in terms of building an impact network. And then we're going to spend a good half an hour talking to, we've some, three really good panelists for you today. And we're going to spend some time talking to them about the successes, the challenges that we have two external networks and one network which is internal, a DOKUS member. We're going to spend some time talking about them and that session is going to be moderated by Fergal O'Connell from, many of you will know the CEO of Self Help Africa. And then we're going to come back and open up the floor, open up to the floor for a Q and A session. And not just Q and As, but a general discussion about now that we have some of this conversation going and we have this tool at our disposal. Where do we go from here? Where do we get to where we want to be? How do we work on building connections and, and deepening collaboration? And building also on the successes that we've had to date, which is also really important to say, because obviously there have been a big number of them. So to get there, I'm just going to give you a brief look at the timeline of this network process. In 2021, if anybody can remember back to that crazy mid pandemic time where everything happened online. We, DOKUS commissioned Reos Consultants to run a research project, which was about reimagining the future. So it's about looking at the sector and saying, okay, what would a transformed, successful, impact, high-impact sector look like in the year 2031? So, and I'll say a little bit more about that in a minute, but it brought a number of people across the sector and some external stakeholders together to look at reimagining the future. And the reason that that piece of work was done was it was, it was created to inform the strategy that we now have in place. So we're now into year two of the 2022 to 2026 strategy. And so we, it was felt that you need, we need to do that external piece of work to inform where we would go in terms of that four-year strategy. That four-year strategy is made up of four main pillars and one of the, one of those pillars is this building an impact network. So roll on to the end of, the end of, or mid 2022. And DOKUS introduced this idea of each member organization appointing a network delegate. And I'll say a little bit more about that in a minute. Towards the end of 2022, we carried out a survey and that survey was done in two parts, part A, part B. And maybe some of you here in the room today will have been responsible for filling out that survey. But it was the second part of the survey that informed the map that I'm going to show you now, just in a few minutes. And so that has brought us to where we are today, where we have this, this tool in place. Certainly the beginning of this tool that we're looking at new ways of working, that we're exploring different ways on how we can build greater impact and deeper collaboration going forward. So just to take you back a moment to what we were talking about, the Reos project. And I'm sorry that the, the screen is a little bit shaky, but just bear with us on that one. So that Reos project was about reimagining, as I said, reimagining the role of Irish NGOs and what it might look like in, in the year 2031. So a little bit about what, first of all, what, what were you asked? And I, I would imagine that some people in the room also took part in, in that piece of research. I've mentioned the first question there, what, what features would the, would a transformed system have? But we also tried to probe a little bit in, in the course of that research, the key trends and forces influencing the direction of the sector and where we would like to be. And also trying to get behind, what are some of the major obstacles to getting to that point? And so the research looked at this type of stock start, continue style. What are the things that we need to, that we currently do well and that we need to do more of and build on? What are the things that we should stop doing? And what are the things that we really need to start to get to where we want to be? So just to say, overall, there are a number of themes that you, as, as members came back, pointed out as part of that research. But one of the overall themes, one of the strongest themes obviously was everybody recognizing that it's very much a changing landscape, both on a local level in Ireland and at a global level, and for many reasons, both within the sector and also across external sector, be it business, public sector and all CSOs. So this is just to illustrate, this is a direct quote that was, was shared with us during the research. This particular individual said, well, the world is changing around us as the NGOs around us as a sector. And NGOs have really been overtaken by events. So we as NGOs are, are not currently, are no longer the leaders. So just to, to set the scene of some of the things that were, were said. What else was said? There was a lot said around the topic of innovation. I hope some of you can see what's written up here on the screen. But in terms of innovation, one of the, one of the comments was, we've been doing this, this work for a long time. Sometimes it's like pushing the same stone up the same hill, assisted for stone. And maybe by taking part in this process, we can think about doing things a little bit differently. Going sideways, doing things a little bit differently. What else? Comments about there being a lack of diversity in the sector and that resulting in this form of group think, which is, is hampering innovation in many ways. A little bit more in 2031, one of the comments was that the sector, we would hope that the sector might look less insecure, but it would be more outward looking. Obviously there'd be more innovation and certainly more diversity. For example, in terms of partnerships, that that would be very important. Another, another element that was brought out there was that with obviously rapidly changing technology and dissemination of information and the way that we can share information, hybrid meetings, et cetera, that that would allow for more engagement across, within the sector from north to south and, and, and vice versa. And it would allow for more involvement of NGO leadership from people based in and from the global south and how important that was. And obviously in our second session this afternoon, we will be talking more about equitable partnerships and we'll, we'll expand on that theme. What else was said? A little bit, well, a lot about more, the need for more collaboration. I won't go through these one by one, but overall, a lot about how we need a more holistic approach to collaboration, that we need more in terms of strategic partnerships, both within the sector and with other sectors. Recognizing, for example, that currently while we're, as, as members, we're all focused on different thematics and different things. But it's very, really, we need to emphasize and build on the fact that there are very strong links between the different objectives. A small pool of committed people, but that there's a need for a multi-stakeholder future, which means collaborative, collaboration, not with just those that we are collaborating with now, but again, with, with perhaps outside the sector or outside of the usual subjects. And one, one comment even went, I was going to say, as far as to say that maybe in 2031, we would completely gotten rid of the, the divide or the, the divide really between humanitarian and development, the distinction. And that instead of looking at things in that way, we'll be looking more around core issues and the issues that were brought up there around governance, particularly governance and, and protection. So a little bit quickly about the network delegates role. In the summer of 2022, each member was asked to appoint a network delegate. The first network delegates meeting took place last summer, summer of 2022. And our second network delegates meeting took place just in March there, about a month ago. And what's the role of the network delegate? Well firstly, and importantly, that that individual would very much take a view across their organization. So it wouldn't be about one particular function, be it communications or fundraising or dev or wherever it might be, that it would be across the organization and that they would bring that view to be the focal point for that member's engagement with, with the DOKUS secretariat, but also with, directly with other DOKUS network, other DOKUS members. And ultimately that that individual would support the development of communications tools and help us within the sector and the secretary to, to bring this whole process forward. So that is very much work in progress. Many members have nominated network delegates, but perhaps not everybody has, but we, we will be working on that going forward. So we got to the stage where we decided to choose this stakeholder mapping tool that I'm about to show you. Why did we do that? Well, we looked at networks internationally. And we looked at best practice in how networks are developed, some of the more successful ones. And we found that some of them were using particularly this process of stakeholder mapping along with other tools. But what we hope that the tool might, a few of the things that the tool will do will certainly be to, to clarify what we have currently, what our thinking is currently, but also to make sure that we are, that we are, that we're dynamic in our, and agile in our thinking. We're hoping that it will spark thinking on further collaborations, on how we can improve systems. Also to help us visualize any blocks in, in getting to where we want to be. But, and also to identify both gaps and opportunities for how we might get there. So very, the last slide before I, I show you the map. These are a list of questions that we sent out to you as part of that survey that I, I mentioned. I won't go through them all now because you, you'll see them coming out in, in the maps themselves. So if you just bear with me a moment, I need to switch into the DOKUS mapping software itself. So let's just hope this works. Okay. Right. So first up, and apologies, I'll need to stand here to control it. This is a visualization of our sector as it is today. So this first map is organization to organization connections. So, so it's in response to the question that we asked you, which was, which DOKUS members do you most regularly communicate with? I'll give you just a larger view of that. So that is the map in, in its base view. That's all the data in one place. What you can then do is focus in on particular areas. In this case, world vision, this is showing world vision and all, how it is connected to other member organizations within the network. If you click and hold on each circle, and every circle obviously represents a, a member, it, it brings up a full profile of that particular organization, which is basically a summary of all the data that, that you would have given us as part of, and, and more as part of that survey. What you can also do is, well, similar to what I showed you with world vision, you can, you can isolate each organization and see which, which other members it's directly connected to. This is the donor organization map. So it shows you from which donors each organization is receiving funding. If I click on from there, this is an example in this case of which organizations have identified, have identified themselves as receiving funds from Echo. So that is a focused view of the donor map. We also created a map based on what organizations identified as their areas of expertise or the particular thematics that they focus on, and that is a view of it there. Apologies that you can't see it in greater detail. But what I would say to you is that in, in the break, we're going to have a couple of laptops around the room. And so anybody who would like to can maybe go and have a, a more upfront, a closer little demo of finding your way around the map and there'd be somebody at each station to help you do that. And I have to say, obviously this is a whistle stop tour and at, at other stages, we'll be helping you to look at this in, in more detail. Again, if you look at, you can look at it from a different perspective. If you look, in this case, Action Aid has identified itself as focusing on these particular thematics. If you look at it from, in the converse, from a different perspective, you can see that you can hone in on each particular thematic and see which organization has identified itself as specializing or being involved in that area. Moving on from that, we also have a map which visualizes or puts together a visualization of each organization's current advocacy priorities or the ones that they have identified. I should say upfront, and we've had some discussion about this in the network delegate meeting, but you know, the, the data is not perfect and the data is always going to be evolving. So this, this data was given at a particular point in time. It will never be fully up to date, but it still gives us a, a lot to work with. And we're looking at, of course, we're looking at a process of how we would, we would keep it more alive at, at different, at different points or update it at different points. If you, on this advocacy map, if you focus in on a particular theme, in this case, climate finance, this gives you a view of the organizations that have identified climate finance as one of their areas of, well, one of their priorities in relation to advocacy. Moving on from that, we also have this map which is called the sectoral practices map. It's the base view of that, so all the data in it. And the main parts of this will be things like locally-led development, we'll talk about later, safeguarding, charity regulations, ethical communications, et cetera. Similar to the other maps, you can focus in on one area of sectoral practices. In this case, I'm, I'm looking at a sub-sector of locally-led development, which is visibility and sharing. And these are the organizations that has associated itself with that element. We have a map based on what you as members have identified as your shared learning priorities. There are a lot of different shared learning priorities in there. We have a map which gives you an overview of international alliances that our members have. And we have something very similar for the, what you have identified as your national alliances. So apologies that I said that is a very much a whistle stop tour of what we have. Obviously, we'd like the opportunity to work with you to look at it in, in more detail and to see what you would find useful out of it and what you would find useful to build on in terms of developing the tool. So I am going to quickly jump back into one more slide that I would like to share with you, which is about essentially, but what we see as the potential uses for, I've mentioned some of them, but the potential uses for this particular tool. And of course, as technology would have it, it doesn't want to display, but I can tell you, I can tell you what they are. There are only six of them. First of all, we, we would see it as, well, there are a number of things that, that were discussed at the, particularly in the, the network development meeting. Oh, what, sorry, just to go back a second, what, what is showing here is the fact that what we are also currently working on is trying to put together a map of each member's, what countries they're in and their, their country programs. And that was something that came up again with the network delegates. And it was felt that that would be very useful to members or was identified as something that would be very useful. So we are working, we're working on that. At the moment, we're working off data. The last time it was updated was in 2021, but that's just a start. And, and we can look at it again and how, how we take it into 2023 and what, what you're doing. So quickly to the potential uses of this tool, six main uses. Obviously for sectoral planning and analysis, so planning and analysis across the sector, across all the different members. But we also think it could be something that would be very useful for each individual member to use in terms of their own strategic and possibly even thematic and program planning. It can certainly be used in a number of different ways for looking at campaigns, campaign mobilization. That was again, something that was, was felt would be particularly, the network delegates that we spoke to felt that would be very, it would be very valuable for that. It can be used for purposes of PR, fundraising, marketing. It's a great snapshot, a visual tool to use when going out there, talking about the sector. It can be used for monitoring and evaluation. And it could also be used internally for new employees to the sector. So I think it would be great to use as an induction tool. And there's a wealth of information there to share with, with new employees. So what I would like to do now is to, we have Mentimeter going. What I'd like to do is ask you to rank in terms of, from one to six, very simple exercise. How you, which you would see as the most important and valuable ways to use this particular tool? Just as a starting point for this conversation, we're going to do that. And then I am going to hand you over to Fergal to start talking to, to invite our panelists up and to open that, the second part of this, of this discussion. Say again? Okay. I don't know if everybody can see the code at the top of that slide. So maybe some of you are, are familiar with this, using Mentee, but not everybody. So if you just maybe use your phones, those of you who can, to go into mentee.com. And from there, it'll request a code and that is the code at the top. So it's, I can call it out again in a minute when, if any of you manage to get into mentee.com. It is seven nine nine two three four one. Okay. That's quick. So it seems that the rankings are, oh, okay, no, it's still, it's still a work in progress. I was going to say sectoral analysis and planning, but it looks like the first up ranking is, yes, sectoral analysis and planning. And then lower down in the list would be induction for new employees. And interestingly, at the bottom of the list would be PR and marketing. Okay, that's thirty-four, thirty-six. Okay, still working. Okay. I'll leave it open for a couple of minutes before I hand you over to Fergal. Before I hand you over, is there, we are, as I said, we are going to come back to a general Q and A where we can have, we can, we can discuss in more detail this tool. And you can ask any particular questions you would like to then. So I actually, I think in the interest of time, we'll leave it until, we'll leave it until we come back to the floor to ask those questions. Because of course I have run over a little bit and we'd like to get on with our panel discussion. And we can always come back to the results of this survey. Fergal, shall I hand it over to you? Thank you.
Thanks very much, Gillian. That's, that's amazing. Now, this is going to be a bit like The Price is Right. I kind of feel like I'm going to invite the panelists to come down. I'm really dating myself by referencing The Price is Right, I realize that. And you have to come down, be like very excited people who are going to win contestants. So we have, we have Martina Fitzgerald, Emma Lane Spollan and Frank Geary. Martina is the CEO of Scale Ireland, which is a nonprofit which supports, represents and advocates on behalf of the Irish tech startup sector and scale-up companies. Emma Lane Spollan is the coordinator of Ukraine-Ireland Civil Society Forum, which is a response initiative convened by civil society acting collectively to support the, the emergency settlement of Ukrainian refugees in Ireland. I'm going to do that weird thing of saying, and somebody who needs no introduction, but then go on and introduce them anyway. Frank Geary, Director of the Irish Development Education Association, which is the national network for development education in Ireland. Thanks very much to the panelists for joining us today. Just building on Gillian's amazing presentation, which I think really captured the kind of zeitgeist that all of our organizations currently find ourselves in. If you, if you look at kind of current leadership and organizational theory literature, it talks a lot about wicked problems, which are these kind of seemingly intractable and interconnected problems. And I think the war in Ukraine is the perfect example of that. You have conflict on the continent of Europe, which has ripple effects that result in increased levels of poverty in Sub-Saharan Africa and is a major driver of food insecurity in East Africa. And the, the whole kind of discourse around the world changing around us, rather than us being drivers of change, I think really links that idea of wicked problems. And the literature goes on to say that the way you combat wicked problems is through a networked approach. So I think the kind of direction of travel that Gillian has outlined there and is encouraging us to, to kind of go on this journey is, is really timely, really important. And, and I think that our, our panelists are going to have some really interesting reflections on, on all of this. And we have a fair bit of time, we have close to fifty minutes. So I think we're going to have a really good conversation and get into some Q and A afterwards. Turning to Emma and Martina initially, because some of your work might be a bit new to, to our membership. Could you give us a brief overview of your, of your networks? How they evolved, how they came about and the kind of direction of travel that you can, you currently see for each of your organizations? Martina?
Well, first of all, Scale Ireland was only set up relatively late, I suppose, in, in 2019. So it's a new organization and it's the independent, not-for-profit representative organization for Irish tech startups and scaling companies. And for those who are not familiar with the sector, and there are many, basically, we represent companies that are in medtech, fintech, enterprise solutions, clean tech, agri-tech, lots of tech. There's a tech focused and they're export focused as well. And they're looking to sell their tech solutions abroad from day one. And they have to invest an awful lot in their tech solutions from the get-go and they could be cash negative. So it's an unusual quarter, we'll say, of the SME sector. But you could have anyone who is starting off with a company who is developing their tech and their team and they're, before they're registered and out pre-vat reg before they're, they're selling anything right up to what has become known as a tech unicorn in Ireland that are worth, you know, quite a, a large amount and employing hundreds. And we have them all around the country. And just to, to give you a kind of, I suppose, synopsis of our kind of members and what they're doing. We have HerTech that deals with registering cattle, to FoodCloud that deals with the tech solution on food wastage, to Siren that deals with security, people trafficking, Drone, or Mana, which deals with drone delivery. So many in the enterprise solutions dealing with companies and helping solutions for them. And then there's also social impactful startups. And I suppose FoodCloud would be in that, but Gabadu that links clinical therapists to parents. So there's a very wide range of them, but tech is at their heart. And again, we were just set up in 2019, but we're very heavy on stakeholder engagement. Members, corporate partners, government, state agencies, other organizational, sectoral, not-for-profits and organizations. So there's a lot of work in our community just maintaining that network. And we also have corporate partners that keep the lights on as well as our members. And we have the EU and global networks. I'm going to stop now.
Emma?
So the Ukraine Civil Society Forum is a group now of about eighty-five NGOs in Ireland, who, back obviously when the war broke out, we had a humanitarian crisis on our doorstep here within Ireland with the refugee flows coming. You know, we would have had maybe two to three thousand a year in international protection. And suddenly, within a month, we were at twenty thousand. So it was really very different and, and it was how to respond. So we, you know, Ireland is full of international development organizations and reached out to say, what do you do in the Lebanon? What do you do in Sudan? Like, how do, how do, what, what is, what is good practice? Give us some guidance. And with that, we organized ourselves. We organized clusters on, you know, gender-based violence and trafficking, accommodation, children, refugee information and all of those things, just to try and pull together the, I suppose, the expert organizations that are there in those spaces. And then try to be connecting into the community response is one of the, probably the most important, because that's the front line of where things are happening. And those organizations wouldn't necessarily be well-networked into a national space or across county or local authority boundaries. They would often be very networked locally. And, and so we were, yeah, it was a pop-up, it didn't have large conversations. It had very little stakeholder consultation. It was, we need to do something, here's something, if you wish to join, do. And then people have, and organizations have chosen to do so because we're offering, I suppose, three things. We were offering the, the, the information sharing, you know, we all needed to learn from each other. There was a few expert organizations around refugee and migration, but, you know, now we have refugees and migrants in all our communities. So how do you get that information out? We're all responding to an immediate crisis. How do we share the knowledge and not be duplicating? Certainly, we're all seeing similar things. How do we capture that data and use that to advocate with government so that we can say, these are real problems? It's not just happening in leash, it's happening in X, Y and Z places. How do we, and then having that space to actually create a dialogue with government, to try and engage the different departments, try to get a better response, try to get leadership, a plan, a communication. And a year on, we're still trying. And then how do we then also look around the goodwill and the narrative, right? Because again, the, the response in Ireland was extraordinary, but we really needed to be, continue to be extraordinary, because this is not a problem that's going away. And we still have 2,000 people arriving in every, every, every month. And it just gets harder, especially when you're in a housing crisis and you're in a cost of living crisis. And so we also set up a story lab to try and bring in the voices of Ukrainians and their own experience in Ireland and bring that through to the media, both national and targeted in local and regional spaces, so that we can bring those voices there, keep people connected to the Ukraine as other things go up on the agenda. And so that's kind of what we are doing. So we have one person working three days a week on the communication side and I work three days a week on this. And so everything else is very much done virtually and through Slack.
Okay, thanks, thanks very much. And Frank, IDEA, the network within a network, things are getting metaphysical, no pressure. Your IDEA has obviously been around a little bit longer, so it would be good to kind of get your reflections on, on the kind of evolution of your network and how it's changed over time? What's driving those changes and is it delivering better impact?
Sure, thanks very much, Fergal, and thanks to Jane Anne and Dokus. It's really great to, to be here and it's great to be here in person as well. So IDEA, as many of you will know, because I know some of you and some of your organizations are members of IDEA, we're the Irish Development Education Association. So we're the national network for anybody who's involved in global citizenship education or education around sustainable development. We have a hundred and ten members. Our members really straddle civil society and education. So we have international development NGOs. We also have community-based organizations here in Ireland. And we have those working within the education system as such. And they're working right across lifelong learning. So from early years, the whole way up through to adult education, taking in the youth sector, taking in all aspects of formal, non-formal and informal education. And in terms of that question about our evolution, IDEA in many ways was a community before it was a network. And I think that's a really, really important part of our identity and our DNA. So some of the people may be in this room, actually, who came together, who were working on development education. And in fact, some of the people may be on this panel, I think Emma was involved as well. So came together as a community, working on development education. And from that, the network grew. And on the question about evolution, that's absolutely crucial to us, because it's crucial to how we work. That sense of ownership and participation by our members is a really, really important part of how we work. Structures have come in, you know, we have working groups, we have other ways of working. But we try in terms of as a staff team, we try and constantly reflect on that. How do we engage the members? How do we keep that active engagement in everything that we do? So in many ways, it's about an approach and a mindset and a way of working. And we would encourage our members also to share that mindset and way of using their network.
I think that, I think what you touched on there is really interesting, the, the difference between a kind of a deliberate kind of planned approach and the organic growth out of a, out of a community. And I'm wondering if the other panelists have some kind of reflections on that. Was I wonder if the, if the Ukrainian response was more organic? Because we saw things popping up spontaneously all around the country. And whether you've kind of harnessed that organic kind of impetus and tried to kind of marshal that into something more networked.
Yeah, I think, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a natural networking that has come out of need, right? And so I think you only exist as a network when you're adding value. And, and that's something you have to manage the whole time. But certainly, yes, it was pop-up, you couldn't get more organic in that sense. And we, the benefit of a crisis, I suppose, there's, there's something about when you can organize around something like a crisis, it's very, very helpful. And people have seen that when we've done referendums, if you can pull everyone together for a movement, it's got a three month, you've got, you know, it's a sprint, you can hold everyone together. When you go to the marathon and you go to the longer and sustaining networks over longer periods, I think, well, you have to go through constant reinvention and you have to always make sure that you are adding value. And, and I suppose the network that you started, we started with a year ago, if we still exist, which we are always under review, whether we could close, would be, will be quite different. And we've had the conversations, whether, you know, do we keep the Ukraine focus? Do we add all refugees? Do we add all migrants? You know, what would, would we be adding value or would we be taking space from others? How do we, how do we actually deliver the most impact on the whole refugee issue? And for now, the Ukraine is the way in, because you get in the door there. But that's not meaning that the equity and the needing to have, you know, having equity within the system is absolutely paramount. So, and when we talk about next stage, it could be about integration and, and how do you, how does that look? And how does that work? And is that our job or is that being handing back this or handing this network over to somebody else or some other organization? So the key for us has been no ego and, and the focus is collaboration.
Yeah, okay, thanks very much. Another issue that that's come up is, is the diversity of the networks. You, you all have very diverse networks. And I think it came through in Gillian's presentation that maybe the Dokus network is, isn't hugely diverse. Like, a lot of our organizations have, you know, have been around for quite a long time. We all do largely very similar work. So I'm wondering if you could maybe, Martina, reflect on, you know, the strength in diversity. It's, it's a cliche, but it's a cliche for a reason. You know, how, how do you draw on that diversity, you know, to, to, to deliver on the impact that you're trying to have?
Well, firstly, I could, you know, I'd like to say as a board member, you can see the power of having an established network here today. We didn't when I joined in November twenty twenty, we didn't have a membership. So we were an organization that had set up just on the cusp of COVID. And all of that period, my predecessor was spending help, helping startups. So we had to put a structure in place, it's quite the opposite of something and of what Emma has said. We had to put a structure, we had to launch a membership model, a fee-paying membership model in the middle of a pandemic. So that's not hard. So we also, and startups, there's a high attrition rate in startups, many don't succeed. And now we all know about those great stories, but there's many small startups, there's scaling startups, there's, you know, ones that are global. So we had to, you know, do a body of work and we had a Slack channel and that had three hundred people. And it's because one member of our team, and I think there was three people on the team at various hours when I was full-time. And that person had just simply had a, you know, was interested in Slack. So out of Slack, a, a membership model that we grew out of a working group with founders, without social media, we'd a couple of hundred, I think we'd seven hundred on our social media. We now have, you know, five and a half thousand. We also, through our newsletters, it was that basic, but we had to hammer the messaging and we clone in what did our community want? And we built a community that today and next week, we're on our third year drive. We now have seven hundred members. And I'm very proud of that, because it was during a pandemic, in a community that has wide and diverse membership. And that some startups, a lot of startups are pre-vat reg, they're, they're starting off. But there's also, of course, those great success stories. So we had to start that structure, so be very grateful for the structure you have in Dokus. But I'm also very proud of what we've built. And I think there's a great pride of what we've done and what we've done to engage that membership and to let it, you know, grow year-on-year growth. And our corporate partners are growing and, and that, but that is not by accident. I think everyone in every organization here knows the amount of time and effort and resources you need to grow or just to keep the status quo, you know, and that is difficult. But it is a very diverse grouping and to engage all elements of it.
And it's probably not a surprise that, that a startup network are using Slack. It's, it's, it seems hugely appropriate. And I'd be interested in going, exploring that a little bit more, the kind of practical tools and platforms that can be used to drive networking and to drive collaboration. And obviously, it has to be appropriate, Slack for startups makes sense. Emma, any, any particular kind of tools or approaches or platforms that have worked for your members?
We're using Slack and Zoom.
Oh, Slack and Zoom, okay, yeah.
And, you know, and I'd used Slack before and something and it never took off, you know, I didn't get it. And, and then with this, we needed something which would have more discipline than a WhatsApp group. You know, I didn't want 10 million WhatsApp groups. I needed to know who was on it, we need to know where the conversations are going, we need to be able to people to self-organize, because we only had a very small office. So it, it wasn't possible, you know, that way. So it, for me, the Slack was enabling us to get whatever conversations people needed to get off, they could go. People self-moderate in many ways, they, they, they connect with each other, direct messaging or whatever. So there's only so much connecting that I have to do, which is very, very helpful. And the other side of it is, it's there, you have the, the conversation is there and the documents are there and the answers are there. So when, so one of the feedbacks we've had from organizations is they found it really useful when they've had a turnover in staff and the staff member changes, they just say, go on the Slack, you'll see it all there, you know. And if there's any questions, come back to me. And so you don't lose the knowledge that often gets shared in emails and in WhatsApp groups.
And for the uninitiated thirty-second description of Slack?
It's just a, it's just, it's just an app on my phone, you know what I mean? And it has a list of, you know, I go employment, accommodation, welfare, you know, you could do HIV AIDS, child protection, you know, that kind of way. And then the people who are interested join in those groups and you don't have to be in any of them. You choose which ones you want to and you choose, you get notifications. And you just post a question or share a resource. Are you see who's also in that and you connect with them? And so things have come out of that for us has been the, sometimes the connections that happen then offline in terms of shared collaborations on pieces of work. But I suppose one example, which has been really helpful for us is, you know, the state hasn't set up a, any monitoring of quality of accommodation. There's now nine hundred and eighty contracts for accommodation out there. There's no quality, there's no HICWA inspections, there's absolutely, we don't even know if organizations are connected to them. So we have had to do a grassroots connecting community organizations with accommodation centers and asking them to be the eyes and ears on the ground, asking them to share if there are any incidents. So we now have an NGO, Doris and Limerick, who is connecting all these organizations up and say, and we're sharing those incidents. And then we're able to then send a report every week to the department to say, these are the issues. We need you to inspect these hotels, we really need X, Y and Z to happen. And that is being happening because of the self-organizing. Slack is just part of it, but that allows us to give a, I suppose, an insight and a transparency into all of that that's happening and let others also join into it when they see that there's momentum and happening there.
Martina, you want to come in there?
And I would say that Slack and many people will have Slack already, lots of organizations have Slack channels and Slack communities. So you're competing against those sometimes, that everybody has got yours open at, at a period. And also, it's time that everybody is checking their Slack every day. So there's no silver bullet, Slack alone, like we hold Ask Me Anything's on Slack as long as our, as well as our channels. And we actually did a, an analysis of our Slack community. And a lot of indirect messaging is the most popular form. Our team, it works really well for working groups. But in others, it can be the quiet networking that's done there. But we actually host Ask Me Anything's on it and they're written Ask Me Anything's. Because let's be honest, we have a thousand people on our Ask Me Anything channel and you can only get in now if you're a member. And you can, on that Ask Me Anything for, for thirty minutes, you can ask an expert any question. Okay, there could be ten people on that channel, but by the next day and the next, and that week, all the thousand will have read that. And we all actually use it, complement the traditional communication forms like newsletters to send out, you know, a link to those Slack conversations and gather them into graphics. So people can see, okay, that marketing expert, that investor expert, this is what they had to say. And you have it also on the member page. So Slack alone, and I think everybody's going to realize that, is not, you know, the silver bullet. It's a complimentary, complimenting everything, the traditional and the new, and constantly trying to make it engage with members, which I think everyone here will know is so important, because we're at the moment introducing on a trial basis, an introduction system within Slack that people are connected through this system, through this tech solution. And we'll see if it works, but we're also prepared that we may have to try something else. So it, it continues, you're never finished.
Frank?
Yeah, and I think I'd add to that, so we've had mixed experience with Slack. It's worked really well where it's been around a particular event or particular activity. It's worked really, really well, you know, particularly when, during the last few years, where we had to move key things like conferences and other events online. The Slack then created essentially the space that you have in this room for people to engage with one another. What we found much more challenging with Slack is to continue it in an ongoing way. But I think that kind of speaks to Martina's point and, and the point that was raised earlier around the need to be constantly evolving, that there is no one-size-fits-all. And particularly at the moment where we're, I mean, like I said, it's great to be here in the room, that the face-to-face is so important and it's great to be back in a situation like that. But it's so different from how it was, you know, pre, pre, you know, twenty twenty, where everything we did by and large was based on face-to-face. Now we're using a mix of, we'll do some events in person, we'll do some hybrid events, we'll do some things that are online. We'll try and communicate with people in other ways. And I think this is the invitation that the, the Dokus, you know, the map we've just seen from Gillian and this impact network approach is really important, because I think it's saying, here's your space and it's for you to engage with it and you to design it for the purposes that you, you need.
Yeah, yeah, thanks very much. I've spent a lot of my career in a very operational environment, which is very heavy on coordination fora. You have UN-led coordination fora and you have NGO-led coordination fora, government-led coordination fora. And in the NGO sector, we are quite well adept at disparaging those, those networking and coordination efforts. And I'd always be that one kind of awkward person to say, you know, someone might say, oh, the UN cluster system doesn't work. And I say, well, actually, you are the UN cluster system and, you know, are you participating fully? And are you sending the right person to the meetings? And I'd used to make lots of friends with those, with those points. But I, I think, I think that's really important for any, for any network, any member, membership-based network, that the members are going to get out of the network, what they put into it. And there's only so much that the leads or the secretariats of those networks can do. And would be really interested to get your kind of reflections on, you know, what, you know, what, you know, what you, what you get out is what you put in. Any reflections on that, any panelist?
Well, we have two working groups at the moment and due to capacity, and I'm looking down at Gina smiling because she has a plethora of them. But we have strategically established two, because to grow that takes a lot of time and you want them to be meaningful. There's no point in having an array of working groups if they're not working. And people, they're walking away, you lose people, you lose members and you lose engagement and you lose cred. So we have one on sustainability that has worked really cleverly and we brought key people in and the members vet the next members of it. It's a small group, but it's really a powerful group. And also, we have a student entrepreneurship group from all around the country and they engage. This is a bad time for them because of exams, but it does work very well. And also that they're part of our events. But I would say that one of the things that we try to do is bring everyone together under one roof. We're not an events organization and I should say we're a hundred percent commercial, we may get sponsored, but we are different to many people in this room, that we don't get direct government funding. So it really is important how we engage with our members, as it is for those who do, to keep that link with direct government funding. But in relation to what we found is powerful, that we hold some events during the year and there, we bring everyone together, all those strategic partners, our members, it's first come, first served to get a ticket to this, our regional startup summit, our corporate partners, key state agencies, and we have our members in the audience and also on the platform. So we will have on the stage, so we will have, for instance, three startups, very different, very different stages, very different styles, talking about their innovations, their plans, their ambitions and also their problems. And facing them, we'll have a keynote and also an address from a key minister. And we've had the Tishuk, two different Tishuk, launch our regional startup summit that only started off last year and we've had again this year in Cork and, and Galway. And then we've had our, our.
in Cork and and Galway. And then we've had our our autumn gathering and we had the Minister for Finance, the only event he did before the budget. And the power of that is that we're engaging our community, they're networking, they're talking, just like in this room, but they're also hearing from a key stakeholder in that. And also, I think from the political perspective, they're hearing from these startups that they may not meet in their day-to-day or spend time. They're hearing about their plan, they're hearing what they're doing and then they're also hearing they're challenging. And it's, I suppose, a constructive way to engage with them. And we have found that powerful as well as it being a networking and also a collaborative piece that everybody can meet. The community comes together under that roof, but we're not events, we don't have the logistics to do several events, but what we do, we try to do well.
Okay, great. Yeah, Frank.
I I think a really key thing on that that question about kind of what you what you get is what you put in is being close to the ethos of what you're about. So for us as an organisation that is focused on development education and global citizenship education, the idea of participation, the idea of participatory learning is absolutely at the heart of what we do. So if we can thread that and build that into whatever we organise as a as the staff team within the network, but also whatever comes from our membership, whether that's through working groups, whether it's through just the informal as well as the formal conversations, you know, that that informal is incredibly useful where, you know, there are ideas talked about in a room like this and then we think, well, maybe we can do such and such around around that. But that staying close to the ethos, that emphasis, you know, on participation, on learning together is a really, really important part of it. And again, I think in the context here of the the Docus conference, you know, the the next session is going to be looking at locally-led development. You know, over, you know, in Gillian's presentation, it struck me thinking back about the RIOS process, for example. There are really crucial questions that are being raised there, which are about our structures, which are about the way that we work, the way that we organise our work. So to use this opportunity, I think, is really, really important. And to use the space here in Docus as as our network to explore those questions, I think, is really, really important.
I I suppose the one thing that I would reflect on is because we've been able to organise virtually and through social media platform, there's no cost or barrier for someone in Wexford or Kerry or Sligo. And so and they don't have to be big organisations, they can be, don't even have to be an organisation if they're, you know, they're committed to what they're doing. So we've been able to connect people in and have them have the national access that they couldn't have normally and they wouldn't have had before we had these 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 devices. And and that adds value to them and they get the, you know, now we're all fighting the far right, they're getting the messaging, the media and how they work it. And they're getting access to government that they wouldn't necessarily do themselves, or their organisation might not want to do advocacy. But then also organisations who are maybe a little bit more resourced, none of them are very well-resourced in this sector. And they're getting the benefit of hearing firsthand the frontline caseworkers and the frontline Ukrainian caseworkers experience of the issues that are coming forward in real time. And there's there's nothing better than hearing it directly from the horse's mouth and reading it on a paper or a report, you know, it just brings it alive. And I think it makes, so so what I'm seeing is there's huge added value from the larger organisations who work on a national stage anyway, who have access to government and but none of them have media people. And then the smaller organisations are the more much more local, further from Dublin organisations who now have a voice that's being heard much more in the first firsthand.
Okay, thanks very much. So in in the interest of getting out what you put in, we're we're going to open it up for for questions now. And we have about twenty, about twenty-five minutes left. And so please do make your voice heard, be the change you want to see. Fanola.
I can probably manage that microphone, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So thanks so much, fascinating and I think really exciting. I mean, it's an exciting opportunity and I think it speaks to the strategic vision from from those to, you know, be much more agile in a way that they connect to. So, you know, it was a really great time. And I suppose I have a couple of questions. One maybe is for for those of us, we have a long list of tensions, but just for thoughts about, you know, where to start or how to start? And is it my members or is it you have a vision of, you know, how we go from that list? We heard from panelists that really is around one or two areas that greatest utility on them. So just your thoughts on that, Gillian. And maybe just comment from the panelists about, you know, what advice do you have for those? Should Docus steer this in some way? Or is it really, I mean, we heard a lot about it coming from, it has to open a need, it has to be useful. So should it be really intentional coming from the from the members? Should we ride and how the use is fantastic to me too.
Thanks, Nola. Gillian, do you want to?
Well, maybe I'll just start and well, two things in addressing your question, where do we go from here? I think the first thing to say is, obviously, this is a tool for use by the members. So we have to be informed by the members. We have, we do have some hope, good ideas internally and where we can go from here with it. And they, most of them do fall under, certainly the the first two potential uses. One would be sectoral planning and analysis and the other would be, well, actually three, campaign mobilisation and also organisational. Well, it's up to individual organisations to to some extent to how they want to use it internally. So we have some ideas around that. We also have, we've we've started playing out with some scenarios. For example, if we were to look in retrospect at, say, an example would be a response to the Horn of Africa crisis. How, if we had had this tool at the time, how would we have used it? And how could we look at the individual maps to tell us X, Y and Z in order to inform how we might mobilise in terms of a campaign? So that's one, I think, concrete example. But there are a few of them. We also have been looking at it, say, in relation to some of the advocacy areas. One of them might be anti-matics, one of them might be climate and a couple of specific areas around climate. But on a practical level, where we'll go from here, I would like to engage with people, with with organisations individually, for those who are hopefully interested over the next couple of months, to find out where you see us going with it, how you might like to input to it, you know, issues around data, because there are some, we will recognise that there are some issues around data. So to be informed by you, but also to bring our own ideas to you on where we can go from here.
And did you want to come in there now?
Yeah, just to add to Gillian, what Gillian said there, I think a lot of some of the vision behind this is trying to figure out how we have the right forum to fit the objective. And I think there's a lot there. I think sometimes it can be a bit overwhelming, where do we go next? But I think it's really around probably the next step and I hope Gillian will get to this when, you know, meeting with your individual organisations is kind of saying, okay, when we look at some of the thematics that are emerging, like what what's that look like in reality? Is it a long-term vision that you have that you want to work with others on? Or is it a case that, you know, you want to ensure that we get together as a sector before COP every year? You know, is it is it long-term, you want to work on climate finance or is it more to do with a different objective? And I think for me, what's driving a little bit of this is that at the moment, we work in quite, I would say, exclusive way. You're either part of a working group or you're not. If you're not part of it, you don't necessarily, you're not privy to the information, you're not necessarily, you don't necessarily know when things are happening. And and actually, that excludes not only people that are, you know, outside Ireland, but also it excludes a lot of our smaller members who don't have the time to be part of all of our working groups. So it's really thinking about bigger, not only in terms of what we do, but how we do it, yeah.
Yeah, thanks very much. Panelists, there was also a question put to you there from Fanola. Where does the impetus impetus come from? Is it bottom up or is it or is it top down or is it not that simple?
You know, the usual answer, it's both. To me, a network is, you know, you have a clear mission, you provide tools, you facilitate. And and there's there's a lot of effort that goes into facilitating, you know what I mean, to make something like this work. And making connections, I think, is a huge part when you're in a network, both internally and bringing access to government and and others. But ultimately, it only succeeds if if the members are engaged, which means it needs to be adding something to their day or to their career or to their network, you know, so I mean, and I suppose you don't have to be hitting one thing. It can be, it's how does it add value and do I enjoy it? Are my meeting people that actually I'm learning from or that, you know, and because you all work together and you probably all work in different organisations in your lifetime, it's a career opportunity to be, you know, connecting with each other. So, yeah.
And I think, and you probably say, I would say, but communication is clear. I think if if those were, you know, donors or supporters or members know from the get-go the level of communication, what the expectation is, that's fair enough. I think if you overpromise and don't deliver, then there is a problem. So I think you have to be honest with them and I think most people recognise that not-for-profits can't do everything all the time. And they're not big organisations. So I think you do have to have honesty about it. I do think that's an excellent resource, Jane Anne and to Gillian, the the mapping that can be used for key strategic presentations to government departments and internationally and to members. Of course, it's such a great and fantastic initiative and I just want to congratulate you on it because it is super, the information that's contained there.
And so when I started an idea, I got some advice from Hans Omer, who was then the director of Docus. So I'm I'm at risk of taking advice from Docus and bringing it back to Docus here. But Hans said to me, he said, look, there's two things that a network does. This one is about responding to the needs of members and the other is about providing sectoral leadership. That those of us who are in networks are fortunate, we have a bird's eye view of the entire context that no one member organisation can have. So in terms of that question, I think it's really about combining both of those. It's that combination of of responsiveness and need and also look scanning the horizon and and seeing more broadly. And I think in terms of then, the other thing I'd say, and this is a real learning from development education, is the importance of facilitation, that, you know, we know inherently in the work of development education that learning spaces don't just happen, they require that facilitation, they they require that that care. Which again is something that I think a network like Docus really does and that a project like this can really, those individual meetings you spoke about, Gillian, you know, those are such a crucial part of of all of that.
I knew Frank would bring the metaphysical in the end. At the back there.
Hi, Anita Freel is my name with goal. I I'm going to actually challenge you and turn this, you know, the the way around. And I say this with being, you know, we've heard here the benefits of being part of a network, absolutely. And I've seen that over, you know, the twenty-plus, you know, years that I've worked in the sector. And I and again, I say this as a very good Docus citizen, I believe absolutely in the value of Docus, that's why I'm here, you know, today. But I mean, having said that, over time, I've also realised that there are disadvantages as being part of a bigger network, you know. There is a proverb, you know, if you want to go fast, you go alone. And if you want to go far, you go together. And, you know, we work in, you know, very, you know, extreme humanitarian situation where if you, you know, were to kind of collaborate and consult, well, then, you know, the emergency has moved on and lives have been lost, you know, et cetera. So I'd like to sort of some reflection, you know, from the panel members on the, there's a disadvantage of of working together, working in networks and maybe the advantages of going it alone sometimes. And I'm I'm thinking now, for example, of you, Martina, even if you could reflect on your personal experience. I mean, you were a journalist in your and chasing that story on your own and, you know, writing that book incredible, you know, which I'll be, I hope all of us have read, you know, Madame President, and now trying to push, you know, the network, you know, this huge number of organisations. You know, what are the disadvantages and how much can you achieve on your own and how much can you achieve on, as I said, you know, with others? Thank you.
Thank you. And to be honest, and it's interesting because people ask me, first of all, the most question I'm most going to get most often is, do you miss journalism? And the question, answer is always very quick, no. And people are very surprised how quickly I say that. I had a great privilege of being a journalist, a national journalist and a political correspondent, World War T, and I really enjoyed it. And I enjoyed the buzz of getting a story. I I hoovered everything, to be honest. And I could, I used to almost announce the budget, you know, the day before, you know. And people thought, oh, someone hands you it. No, that's about twenty, thirty phone calls and checking or rechecking. But I loved my period in that, but you were constantly engaging with people and building trust and credibility. And if that sounds familiar, it's exactly the same in 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 what I do now, but you are responsible for an organisation. So yes, you might have been building all those relationships, you're still working with a team and a newsroom and editors and cameramen, which you don't see on air. And likewise, you're you're now got your team and you're trying to build them up and keep them and and also motivate them and energise them and also give back and recognise them. And I will say today has been a very good example of that because I always think you you get a good sense of an organisation. We're not just name-checking, but it gives back to those who who've got them on stage here because it's never just one person on stage, it's the the people around. So in terms of, I was never really solo, but I was in building my contacts. But it, you know, strategic stakeholder engagement is the exact same at a higher level. Now it's CEOs, it's still stakeholders in government and state agencies and it's membership. But I think if you underpinning, no matter in what role you are, the values. And like sometimes some, I was trying to get, and actually it is for this area, a lovely startup for our Department of Finance, a autumn gathering, and it measured satellite data on crops in Africa. And it was such a great startup and great idea. And unfortunately, it didn't do well, it went to the wall. But I still gave them a ticket, although they couldn't afford the membership or get in at that time. And I think it's the values you have that builds the network as well, that you don't forget people and be transactional either. You both have to to do it. So I don't really see, I do see a change in pressure in a different way. Timelines and and social media are not so much, but also you have people under you that you have to mind and also keep that community.
Yep, thanks very much. Disadvantages? Anyone else want to, sorry, anyone else want to come in there?
I I mean, I think, you know, as you said, Anita, that, you know, pace is definitely, you know, the the pace of what you can do within a network compared with what you can do as a as a an organisation is by its very nature different. But I also think, I mean, I increasingly find myself thinking of the metaphor of a an ecosystem when we come to networks and when we come to working together. But fundamentally, we are made up of, you know, a range of different organisations, individuals, actors, who all have their own specialisms and their own specialist function essentially. And that when we come together, we have that, you know, huge additional impact. And I think, I I know I'm answering your question with an advantage rather than a disadvantage, I can't help it. But I just, I think that that there's so that the tension and the dynamic is there where you have sometimes those those individual organisations don't come together. You know, I know that, you know, in many of the debates here in Docus, that's the case around certain issues, but there are always areas where we can come together. So I think that tension between advantage disadvantage is actually a really productive part of of working in a network.
I might just say, I'm trying not to speak too much today. But I might just say, I I don't see it as an either or. And I think it's, you know, if you are, I think fundamentally, within all of our members, there's some core issues which I think we all agree with, you know, and that we all want to advocate on or we all want to lobby on. And I think it's what I would like to see is that, you know, at that highest level, we can come together in a kind of a purposeful way and agree that lines, but actually also have the flexibility and the space for organisations to have their own messages, their own dialogue. And I think the the Horn of Africa last year was one example where I think we we tried to do that where, okay, this is an issue for all of us. We are all shouting that this is unacceptable, what's happening. But actually, you know, we are, each individual organisation then within Docus has their own narrative, has what they are, want to push out what they, and it's not up to us to control that, but it's us to amplify the broader issue and come together to amplify it, yeah.
Time's marching on. I think probably have time for a couple more questions. Rosamund at the back.
Thank you, quite loud as it is. Yes, how do we bring more diversity? How do we connect, get more people to connect with us from the global south through these collaborations and networks?
Yeah, you 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 probably have some good thoughts on diversity and power differentials and different kinds of organisations, some who might need to have their voices amplified.
Well, I suppose, I think there's no more democratisation than a Zoom screen. You're all equally, you know, in your same shape box and, you know, the you you know, the distance is not there. Yes, you may be sometimes language, which we obviously, we're only dealing with Ukrainian and English.
Yes, you may be sometimes language, which we obviously, we're only dealing with Ukrainian and English. But, you know, it's, that's the piece that I've just been really struck by is that the accessibility, the barriers to, to being around the table, the barriers to being in the room are now gone. When we, if we try to bring back it in Dublin meetings, then you begin to exclude people who can't come and travel. So because, you know, we're not trying to exist forever, we're not trying to create a network that's going to be here in ten years' time at all. What we want to do is to respond to be gone, but what the legacy will be, will be the connections between people, right? The relationships are being built and that's what will be the, the legacy. And so I suppose the thing that we have been very lucky is there's no ego in the room. We were stepping into a vacuum that nobody owned, it wasn't someone else's space. So, so we were answering, we were an answer and different answers for different people. And that's why I think we've been lucky and some may be quite different, maybe other networks who are established to, to exist forever. But I do think the, 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 the strength and the added value is the ability to have people connected in who couldn't be here otherwise. And there, that, and, and we get an awful lot out of it.
Maybe one last question? No, okay then. Just to, just to wrap up, you know, I think some really clear themes, you know, emerged today. One thing that I'm going to take away is the importance of the network delegate. I think, you know, for, for each one of our organisations, it's clear that they're going to play a really key role in moving this project forward. So I'm, I, I'm definitely going to take away, you know, making sure that we have the right net, network delegate and they are equipped and empowered to represent us in this really exciting venture. I think, you know, inevitably with all these kinds of things, there's the, there's the kind of hard technical side. You know, we talked about Slack channels and, and Zoom and working groups and, you know, structures and things like that. But the softer side for me really came through, we talked about getting the ethos right. We talked about ownership, we talked about values. And I think, I think that's going to be key for us and, you know, we should be able to lean into that. We're all pretty mission-driven, values-driven people. But it's only going to come about through, through really, you know, engagement from, from all of our organisations. And, and I know that Gillian has committed to, to contact in all of our organisations. And this is just the first step on a, on a long journey. But I think it's a really exciting kind of direction of travel for Docus and I'm definitely, I'm definitely bought in anyway. So just with that, I'll just thank each one of the, the panelists, Frank, Martina and Emma. I think their contributions were really insightful and thanks for your time today.